Turn the mic on. We're gonna open meeting right now, six o'clock on March eleventh. And first thing we'd like to start off with is the Pledge of Allegiance. The Administrator, will you call, do roll call, please?
Mayor Hibbin.
Here.
Councilmember Bryan.
Here.
Councilmember Glazer.
Here.
Councilmember Rainville.
Here.
Here.
Consultant Boils.
Here.
Attorney Ruby.
Here.
Planner Nash.
Here.
Engineer, and I'm gonna say Craig, cuz I don't know your last name.
Here.
Yocum. Lieutenant Bangeter.
Here.
The Chief Miller let us know he was not going to be here. Administrative Assistant Johnson, here. And your interim city administrator, I'm here.
Thank you. So, we're looking to approve the agenda. Would somebody like to make a motion or have any discussion on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor.
Let's move right, go ahead.
No objections. I propose moving ten E and F up to five E and F under consent agenda.
One second, Councilmember Rainville. Alright, one more time with your proposal. Move ten E and F.
E and F up to five E and F.
Yes, this is all the ordinances that we read last night. Councilmember Rainville, go ahead.
If there's no objections, I would move under City Council, all business to remove, to move the approval of resolution amending the 2024 budget up to consent. And that would be EFG.
So, to clarify, is this moving nine A to G under five G?
Correct.
Does seem to work for everybody. Any discussion needed on that? All your questions answered. Okay, would, so, things that are changing, ten E and F, nine A would all fall under the consent agenda. And they would become five EF and G. You're second on that to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Alright, roll call vote, starting with, go ahead.
Councilmember Glazer, second it.
You got it. We'll start the roll call vote with yourself, Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan.
Aye.
Councilmember Glazer.
Aye.
And I'm also an I. Motion carries, agenda approved. Okay, so we're gonna open up, I'm gonna turn it over to Bob Ruby, our city attorney for the public hearing for the 2025 overlay project. Look you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. My name's Bob Ruby. I'm the city attorney. We're here tonight for what they call the improvement hearing. It's, it's the first of two required public hearings under Minnesota statutes. And this hearing is to listen to you as people, residents that may be assessed for a portion of the cost of this 2025 overlay project. For you to listen to a presentation about the project given by the city engineer. And then to be able to ask questions and give feedback to the city council about whether you believe this project should move forward. Whether you believe there, this is also an opportunity, a lot of times, for people to give information to the city and the engineer. About maybe some drainage issues or other things that maybe the city's not aware of, that you as residents that live there are imminently knowledgeable about. So this is sometimes a way to give feedback. But it's really here for you to listen, understand what the project is about, and to be able to say feedback to the city council whether we should proceed with this project or not. It's not something that gets put to a vote by residents. This is something the city council, as the elected officials, would have. And then, after this hearing, the city council has a decision to make. Do they wanna quote, "order the improvement," is what they refer to it in the statutes. And then ask for plans and specs to be prepared. Plans and specs typically would be prepared, and then it would be put out for bid. Once the bids come back, we typically will hold a second public hearing. And that public hearing, you will also be receiving notice, like you were in the, in the, in the newspaper and in the mail. And that tells you specific dollar amount, the assessment. Everything you will hear tonight, either in writing, in the PowerPoint presentation, or from anyone up here, including this city engineer, is estimates of cost. We just don't know. And as we, this is what we think the cost might be based on past practices and past projects that we've done. But as we get further along in the process, we'll refine that. The engineers, once we get the bids back, we have to, by law, go with the lowest responsible bidder. It's under the municipal contracting. So you know you're getting the best price we could find as a residence. And then, we give you notice for a second improvement hearing, or a second public hearing, which is the assessment hearing. And again, you can come back in and give feedback on that. The, just if the town, excuse me, the city council orders the improvement, that doesn't mean that we are bound. Because it's not, we're not, I can't stop the process until such time as the, when the city council actually awards the contract to a contract. At that point in time, they wanna get paid whatever the money is that they bid, and that's when I can't stop it. But before then, at any point in time, if something comes back, we do the plans and specs. The bids come back, the bids are a little bit higher than we thought, then the city council has the ability to always, even then, to put the brakes on the project. So we're always looking to try and do what's best for the residents and the rest of the city as a group. But this is that first public hearing, and, and I would thank you for coming tonight. And I guess, Mr. Mayor, I recommend referring it to the city engineer.
Sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just have a short presentation here before it's opened up to the public. This project would include five street areas or five streets, including Krypton Street, Lithium Street, one hundred eighty-ninth Lane, Tiger Street, and one hundred ninety-fourth Lane. A little background now, then, has sixty-one miles of roads they maintain. This project is one point seven miles of that sixty-one, so a small fraction. The city just doesn't have enough general levy funds every year, so they do, are planning on assessing a portion of this project. And again, if this project moved forward, it would be anticipated to be constructed in 2025 this year. These streets in general are over twenty-five years, nothing too terrible as far, as far as the shape. They've just seen some normal deterioration of things you'd expect. And again, the purpose of this project would to do an overlay to extend the life. We did investigate or field review the streets. Again, they all look very similar. This is Krypton. Again, Lithium looks very similar. Just wanna point out, on this one, on the bottom there, you can see a pothole. This is one hundred eighty-ninth Lane. That would have to be, of course, repaired prior to the overlay. Again, Tiger Street, all the streets look very similar. And then here's another example on one hundred ninety-fourth Lane, some severe block cracking, we call it, or alligatoring. That would also be fixed prior to the overlay. So why is the city proposing this project? MinDOT does a lot of research every year, and studies come out of that research. And that research is used by the industry to maintain the life of, of pavements. This is kind of an illustration of a curve that's kinda come out of that research. The gist of it is, you see the word fair there. That's kinda where we judge these pavements at. But it typically takes seventy-five percent of that pavement's life to get to that condition. So let's say a thirty-year pavement, you know, it'd take like fifteen to twenty years to get to that condition. But after that, if you leave it go, it can fall fairly rapidly to very poor. The average is typically twelve percent. So, you know, within three to five years, those roads could look much different than they do today. So just to touch on what is pavement, what we call in the industry, butuminous pavement, it's a mixture of oil, sand, and rock. The rock gives it the structure, the sand fills in the voids, and then it's kind of all glued together by an oil. Kind of the first thing to go, a lot of times, is that surface oil. So this is a surface of a pavement with most of the oil gone. You can see the rocks. Kind of the process of how pavement deteriorates, it cracks. Pavement's gonna crack no matter what you do. It's an elastic material. From our extreme heat and cold temperatures in Minnesota that we experience, it's gonna crack. It typically gets worse if you don't seal these cracks. That's why cities seal cracks. If you don't, water gets in the subbase or the base under the tuminous. That base gets soft, and then when you get a load like a vehicle, it typically breaks the pavement up. And that's kinda where you start seeing that cracking, like we saw that one picture. The other phenomenon is when water gets in there, in the winter, it freezes and expands. So if you ever drove down a road and you hear that tunk, 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 that's kind of the cracks expanding. We call that tenting. And then, over time, this is what you get. And kinda, we kinda saw that in that cul-de-sac. Once the pavement's at this point, it's pretty much too far gone, and you might as well live with it as long as you can, and then reconstruct it. So again, this project is proposing an overlay to increase the strength and structural integrity and delay more expensive repairs in the future. Again, some patching will be required, like we talked about. After the patching is done, the pavement surface is cleaned. And a tack coat is on oil, or tack is applied to that clean surface. So that glues the new pavement to the old pavement. Without that, that new pavement would peel right off over time. And again, we do a one and a half inch overlay. This is just kind of a typical section. After you do the overlay, of course, there'll be a one and a half inch little lip on the edges, and that's filled in with topsoil and seeded. So estimated project costs, this project is cost, estimated to cost three hundred and sixty-six thousand eighty dollars. Not included in that cost is the patching, thirty-seven thousand four hundred. In the past, the city has paid that cost one hundred percent. And then of that three sixty-six, fifty percent is proposed to be assessed. This is just another chart. Again, we think we're in that gray area right now, structural improvements. We're beyond routine maintenance and preventive maintenance is more like, if you've seen them, chip seal or seal coat a road. Those are fairly cheap options. We're at the gray area there, which is much less than a reconstruct, but a little bit more than, of course, preventive maintenance. A total of fifty-two properties were identified that could be assessed on the benefit for this project. Again, the Krypton, we kinda seen these already, Lithium, Tiger, one hundred eighty-ninth Lane, and one hundred ninety-fourth Lane. So it's proposed to do this assessment on a per-unit assessment basis. So basically, everyone gets the same assessment. It's a fairly simple calculation. Take the total cost, one hundred eighty-three thousand, which is half of the total cost, divided by fifty-two, and that's how we get the thirty-seven, thirty-five, twenty per unit or per property owner. The time and interest of what that would be paid over is determined by the council, but in the past ten years has been used. Or you could pay that cost upfront. If you don't, it would go on your property tax. So Bob has pretty much touched already on this schedule. Again, if the project moves forward, it's anticipated that public bids would be opened in June, and the contract executed in July. And the project probably would be done around September, end of September. With that, I'll bring it back to the mayor. That's the end of my presentation.
Alright, thank you. Can you go back a few slides to where you talked the condition of the road from fair and poor? Back probably twenty slides, but I think it's really an important one to look at. Right there.
Yeah.
So the time in years down below, it doesn't have any designator on how many years each tick mark is. Do we have any idea? If you use that, each tick mark is one year, you would say it's fair to poor in twelve years, but you were stated between fifteen and twenty years.
Yeah, so if you, the average life of a pavement, if you do nothing, is around thirty years, let's say. So that fair, that seventy-five percent would be seventy-five percent of thirty, which is twenty-four years, let's say. So you could expect within twenty, after the twenty-four years, you gotta be looking at some type of project like this. But it can drop very quickly, so twelve percent of that thirty is three. So three to five years, you could very quickly get to very poor condition.
We just use twenty-four years. After twenty-four years, it needs to be reconed, just as.
Right. That's where we're at today. This kinda seems to be falling in place.
That makes sense from, from your experience with other cities?
Yes. I mean, nobody knows for sure, but it could go another five, ten years well, but once it starts to go, it'll go quickly.
And then your costs go substantially.
Right, then you're basically reclaiming the pavement and repaving.
Okay, so I think that's a really important one. So we know if we have thirty-six miles of roads and every twenty-four years, it's just a math problem at that point, where you can allocate the right amount of funding. Okay, so at this point, we're gonna open up the public hearing specifically for the road overlay project. Do we have anybody signed up to speak for the public hearing, or would anybody like? The public forum is different. This will be the public hearing for the road overlay project. Would anybody like to speak from the public?
Typically, that, it's fairly short-term, so you'll have access all the time. The actual day of paving, there'll be some, but they'll pave one of these streets easily in four to six hours, so.
Each day, one day. On the next day. Designing road analysis for one, two, or three days, depending on whether you might have a lot more problem surface. And then they'll begin to put the tack on. Today, they put the tack on. And immediately, a good four, five hours.
No, it's good. Is there any other questions? If, if you do have comments, I'd ask you to come up to the mic, state your name and your address, and ask any additional questions. So it is a public hearing right now. Well, that makes it pretty easy. We, we're gonna close the public hearing then. Alright, public hearing is closed. That was very quick and easy, and now we can discuss on any portion of the resolution. So turn it over to the council at this point. So this is particularly for the approval, approve the resolution for twenty-twenty-five XX order improvements for the twenty-twenty-five overlay project. As Attorney Ruby has already stated, these are estimates at this point.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor. Please notice you all got an updated resolution. Because she, engineer Shane changed a couple of things from what Ruby had said, specifically number four.
What did Shane add? Yeah. No, no, I gotta get my glasses on here.
He added that Hawkinson Anderson is hereby designated as the engineers for the road improvements and are hereby directed and authorized to prepare plans and specs for the making of such improvements. And he said that because of the timeline.
Yeah, I think the old resolution didn't have it moving forward. We're at a point where, if you want it done this year, you probably gotta get going here soon.
No, the only change to this was that, from the draft that I put together, is that it says the recital set forth above our incorporated here, and everything else is similar to the version that I emailed over to Shane. So what we had in our books match is what you just gave me. So it depends on what the timing was of. Yeah, okay. So this is fine to use. I have no problem with, with that. It's consistent with mine.
Just to clarify, I think Shane maybe sent something over that got put online, and then I think Bob might have commented afterwards, so.
Okay.
That might be the confusion.
No, Shane called me and said, "Could we do this?" And I said, "Yes." I sent Shane a revised resolution, then Shane, I sent it out to everyone. And then Shane also then contacted, cuz he didn't see it as part of the packet, so he sent things out. So it's, but it's, the language is consistent with what I recommended, so I'm fine with it. Okay, Councilmember Rainbow, you, you wanted to make a statement?
So, Mr. Mayor, if there's no objection, I would move the resolution ordering improvements for the twenty-twenty-five overlay project as amended.
So Councilmember Ryan, second. Alright, we'll do roll call, go, go, we'll call boat. We'll, what, Councilmember Glazer? Councilmember Brian. Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm also an I, motion carries. Alright, so we will now move to the public forum. Can somebody go grab the sheet and see who signed up? You already have.
Dan Williams.
Will you please state your name and your address, please? I would ask to keep it to three minutes.
Yep.
Dan, the man, seventy-nine, sixty-seven, one hundred ninety-first Lane, Mellow, Minnesota. I had a couple of things I'd like to say. One, I'd like to congratulate the girls in the office for bringing closed caption to these meetings. Cuz I know sitting at home, if somebody turns their head, or, but for some reason, it's hard to hear the verbiage, and it's lost forever. But with the captions, you have a second or a millisecond to see what you missed. And so I think those girls in the office, that was a good thing that they are, is it starting tonight, the closed captioning? You know, it's a good thing that they have instituted, it'll really benefit our community. Second, they did an overlay on the basketball court right behind us last year, when they repaved the parking lot to turn it into a pickleball court. And I was gonna say, it'd be nice to get the ball rolling on that before they start the T-ball. Twenty-something years ago, myself and Paul Stensel and a couple of other guys, we started T-ball here with just nine kids and some used equipment. And now, if you drive through there on Wednesdays, there's hundreds of people out there playing T-ball, and T-ball, and it has expanded to soccer for the youth. And we're gonna, we have hundreds of houses that are gonna be built in the vicinity, so a pickleball court would get used, at least on Wednesday night when the people are there. So I don't think it would be wasted monies. Second, the boat ramp down there at Twin Lakes Park on Sundays is quite crowded. And it used to be twenty-something years ago, you just had a few fourteen-foot boats down there fishing. But now you have the boats, and they're bigger. You have paddleboards, canoes, inflatable kayaks and stuff. And so, there's a cluster of people trying to use this one boat ramp. Ideally, the parking area need to be, needs to be reconfigured, maybe some lanes cut, so that the kayakers and canoeers don't have to use the boat ramp. They can just go right through the woods, it's probably fifty feet or something. The problem is, there's a sandy area right next to the boat ramp, and some kid or dog or squirrel or whatever is gonna get run over. And we should get her, get ahead of this before something happens like that, because when you're backing the boat in there, your visibility is very limited. And these kids, they meandered right behind the boats with a floating ball or something. So, something that somebody should look into. Third, I represent a bank of people that think that the council could be expanded from the five people that are on there now to seven or nine. Because I've been coming here almost thirty-five years, and I've noticed a pattern that people kinda vote with a, instead of voting the issue, they vote with a friend or something. And a lot of legislation doesn't get passed, because I've said out there, you know, and I'm not that smart. And I, you could tell what the, the vote's gonna be on issue, you know, cuz somebody automatically votes with somebody else. But I think if we had seven to nine people, we'd kinda diversify the voting pool. Also, if you're a councilperson, and you had an issue, you could bring forth, and it's a better chance to get in the past. You don't have to just persuade two people, but you know, everybody. So I think it would be good for the community to have seven or nine people voting on our community issues. And I think that's about it.
Sir, can I ask you one clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
You said in the basketball court, you would like to make that a pickleball court?
Well, that was in the works. You, you kinda meant, you and Councilman Glazer missed, might have missed out on that. But Dan Bryan, I think, was pushing that through last year, and I don't know where he is on that. But yeah, it's, it's been overlayed with asphalt, so it's smooth. So it needs a fence, a fence, and I think it's big enough for two. Am I right?
Basketball court was widened so that.
Yeah, it's two pickleball. As it is now, you know, there's no pickleball in the city. And now, we have to either go down to Ramsey over to Oak Grove. And since that's right in the center of town, that would probably get used. I talked to the youth pather over at church, and he thinks that their youth would frequent it. So I just think it'd be a good fit for the community, right there in our park right downtown now.
Thank you so for your inputs.
I'm all for giving these kids something to do besides video games, you know. Anyway, thank you. And also, Kosovo Rainville, I think you should wear some now then attire, or film some of these things from the beach. You know, a coffee cup, a T-shirt, swimsuit, whatever, you know. You can advertise for your community while you're down there in Florida. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not taking note of that last comment. Alright, who's next? Was everybody else signed up on? Did there any wanna speak instead? No? Okay. Is there anybody else signed up? Hey, anybody else that didn't sign up that wants to talk? Alright, thank you. We'll close the public forum, and we will move on to Connectus Energy. So Nick?
Thought your consent agenda was next, sticking with that.
It, it is, but it's already approved, sir.
Alright.
So we're gonna go right to you. One, I wanna thank you, thank you for taking the time to, to greet the city of Now Then and the council on, on the steps that you guys are taking and the work and effort you're putting to help internet come to Now Then. So thank you for being.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor Hibbin.
Is your mic, is your mic on?
It is, it's green. So I think I'm on.
You're on.
Okay, great. But yeah, thank you very much. Thanks for having us here. We appreciate the invitation. I wanted to start by first congratulating the city of Now Then, congratulating you, congratulating your residents on this important project, getting this high-speed fiber internet extended to the community. We know how important it is. It's an exciting project, so wanted to start by congratulating you on that. My name is Nick Lowline. I'm the vice president of electric operations at Connectus Energy. If you wouldn't mind advancing the slide here, I'll go through a little bit about what I plan to talk about today. First, I'll tell you also, I'm joined by Matt Claypool. Matt's behind me here. Matt is our manager of electric operations services. If you all have any, so I'll give the presentation today, and if you all have any, like, really detailed, tough questions for me, I'll refer those to Matt. If you all have any, so I'll give the presentation today and if you all have any like really detailed tough questions for me, I'll refer those to Matt. But do my best here. So so first of all, I'll start with if you want to go back a little bit of an overview on Nexus Energy, just who we are, just remind everybody what our role is in the fiber project. Little bit about construction standards that are gonna come into play as we attach add these attachments to our poles. How the process works for attaching to. Connects energy poles, some risks that we have identified and how we're mitigating those, a map of the project and the current status. So. So connects us at a glance. We are the largest consumer owned utility in Minnesota. We're the largest co-op in Minnesota. It makes us roughly the third largest by number of customers, third largest electric utility in the state. Serving roughly one hundred and seventy thousand members. We have about two hundred and fifty million in annual revenue, about three quarters of which comes from our residential members. About two hundred and fifteen employees based out of Ramsey. Our service territory that you see on the screen there is about a thousand square miles over eight counties, so stretching from kind of the edge of Saint Cloud to the Saint Croix River. Down to Badness Heights and into Dayton and up to sort of the southern border of like Princeton and Cambridge area. That's our territory. And then on the map there, you can see now then in a in a red square there where it's located within the territory. Our distribution system is served through forty three substations and about ninety six hundred miles of line, two thirds of which are underground. And we consistently rate from the top percent nationally in terms of the reliability of our electric system. So. Connects the center. So all of you here that are residents and now then you are also unless you're off the grid, you're also connects this energy members. You know, we are your electric service provider. You know that Comcast is or will soon to be your telecommunications service provider. So the question is, well, why are we involved? The answer is on this slide. It's polls. We own a little over two thousand two hundred poles across the city of now then. That serve all of you serving serving our members and Comcast has requested to attach their facilities to our to our poles across the city. That's why we're here and that's why we're involved. So. This is not unusual, I'll just say. We have attachments telecommunications providers that are attached to our poles all over our system. Comcast is in fact one of our most frequent attachers. So we have a lot of experience working together. So when telecommunications providers attach to electric poles, the facilities, the attachments have to adhere to certain standards, the one being the National Electric Safety Code, N E S C. In particular, two areas for strength of pole and clearances of the wires. If you go to the slide. So in terms of pole strength, we need to make sure the N E S C has standards around this that make sure that when those additional attachments with their additional weight are attached to the pole. That the poles can withstand the lateral forces of wind against those wires of ice buildup to make sure that they maintain their structural integrity. To, of course, continue to deliver reliably to all of you. We don't need poles breaking and falling over in wind or in, you know, heavy snow or anything like that. So important that the poles have the proper strength. Sometimes this means that poles need to be upgraded to larger sizes, larger diameter basically of poles. And then importantly, we need to make sure we maintain the proper clearances. So overhead cables need to have proper clearance. That's both clearance from the ground to where Comcast attachments will be. And from Comcast attachments to where our facilities are, our wires at the tops of the poles. So you'll know you'll notice when you're driving down the road, you notice that when wires are strong from poles, there's a certain amount of sag to them, right? They're not pulled tighter that would pull the poles over. So there's a certain amount of sag. And those wires have to we have to make sure at maximum sag. So on a hot day, when you know metal contracts on the cold day and it expands on one. When those wires are at maximum sag, you need to make sure that there's a certain amount of distance between their facilities and our facilities. And their facilities and the ground for safety. So the clearances that we need to take into account are also specified in the N E S C. But it gets a little more complicated because most of the poles are located in public rights. So it could be that local government agency has requirements that are in addition to the N E S C. So to the table to the right here, you see MinDOT's requirements. So any attachments along Highway forty seven need to meet MinDOT's requirements. Anoka County also has its set of requirements, which they and Comcast and we have all worked on together. We need to make sure we adhere to those and no county rights of way. And of course, the rest of the poles that are in the city of now then right away, you all might have your own requirements. I'm not aware that you do. So that defaults to S F T N E S C, but you could set your own different clearance requirements. So going through the process of how Comcast actually attaches to our poles, sort of how this works, it's a. This is meant to show kind of the process. So step one, they they submit an attachment request to connects us. The request is is a technical document, an application showing all the poles they want to attach to. Drawings of where and how the attachments will be, their weights, their characteristics, those sorts of things, and their engineer's analysis. We then review that attachment. We can access review that attachment request. We ensure that it conforms with all the codes, our construction standards. And at that point, there's some back and forth between our engineers and their engineers to make sure we're all in a common understanding. Once we reach a common understanding, step three in this process is we provide Comcast what's called a make ready estimate. So the term make ready. In the world of pole attachments is the work that's needed on our from our perspective to make the poles ready for Comcast to attach to. So we provide them a make ready estimate of what the cost is gonna be to do that work. And just to be clear, in case anyone questions around this, it's a hundred percent of our cost. There's no margin. There's no profit built in. We're not not for profit electric cooperative. As you know, every year you always as connect energy members, you receive cash back. In any additional margin that we have beyond what it takes to run our business. There is no profit to be made. We're not looking to make profit on it simply to recover our costs at one hundred percent. So we prepare that make ready estimate, present that to Comcast. They can choose to either accept it or not. They certainly have the ability to go underground and not attach the poles. At any time, but if they choose to accept it, they pay the bill. We then perform the make ready work. So we're up to what am I next step? I should have numbered these. Step seven. Performing the make ready work. So that consists of poll additions in some cases if clearance is gonna be an issue. Change out to polls for strength considerations or rearranging attachments which won't come into play, I don't think here in now then. And then once we're done with that, we inform Comcast and the poles are ready for them to make their attachments. So some of the risks and mitigations that we've looked at when we when this project came on our radar. Is the first one, we we termed engineering risk, right? Making sure that we all understand what the standards are. We're applying and interpreting and applying the standards the same way. And our mutual requirements to 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 work consistently and effectively together. Like I mentioned, we've worked with Comcast for many years. Our engineering teams are working very closely together on this project to ensure good communication, good understanding. Materials in our industry, since particularly the pandemic, it's been really challenging to get materials. It's been a lot, a lot of long lead times. We've looked, we've got good relationships with our vendors, making sure that there's materials available. Just to give you a sense for this. I mentioned that we have some twenty two hundred poles across the city. Comcast preliminarily is analyzing eleven hundred of them for potential attachment. That could translate into some five hundred poles that we may either need to add or change out. Perspective on that, in an average year for our whole business, we buy about four hundred poles. So it's like doubling what our annual rate is. It's a I mean, it's a lot. So material risks, we've checked in with our vendors, we understand our lead times, and as long as the project continues to move forward, we'll be able to put in orders and and be on top of the materials issues. So be able to mitigate that. And then labor, you know, internally, on staff, it wouldn't be on staff labor that would actually do the work of the make ready work. We have hired a trusted contractor that's done quite a bit of work for us before on full change outs and other types of work like this to be able to actually complete the work. So. So we should be in a good position there. Project status. So this map shows the first two phases of the project as as Comcast has applied for attachments. So. The red is phase one. So you see that up now then Boulevard. And then over on the north side, Pickle, I think it's like two hundred fifth and two hundred seventh where they've that's phase one. Phase two then is in green. So Viking and Old Viking going east to now then. And some other roads on there shown in green. And then the rest of the city right now are showing us the remaining phases. So if you lump phases one and two together. Our review is complete on their attachment request. Those two phases represent roughly a third of all the poles to be analyzed. And out of that analysis, there's a hundred and five poles that we're gonna need to install and three to be replaced. The remaining phases, the blue area is another eight hundred poles to analyze. And we expect to have that reviewed by May to April. So then breaking it down a little further, phase one, the make ready estimate is in Comcast hands. Once they've accepted it, we'll apply for permits. With no accounting with now then and we'll begin to make ready work. Phase two, we're working on the make ready estimate. We'll get that to Comcast. Next, and we'll go through that step in the process. We think about that that arrow processes that I had before. And the remaining phases, we're waiting on Comcast. They're analyzing it to put in an application and have the details to us. So. That concludes my presentation. I want to close by just saying we're committed, our part of the project here, we're committed to a continued partnership with Comcast with the city of now then. We realize the importance of the project and want to see it done completely and successfully. So with that, I'll stand for any questions the council may have for me.
I definitely want to make a statement. One, thank you guys for coming and presenting. When I before my first conversation with Kinesis, I didn't realize how integral Kinesis was to the Comcast project. But just a fantastic organization, very professional to deal with. And the other thing is, is we talked in, I'll say, late January, they were initially projecting they would finish the analysis in May. They've been working to pull that timeline into April. So again, just excellent work. And by using for Comcast to use the poles that connects this is poles, it will save them basically ten times the expense if they had to drill. So it's so much cheaper for Comcast to proceed working with Kinesis. So that's what's gonna make our our project successful. The overall investment of just the high speed internet in now then is eight point five million dollars. So for everybody to wear it, it's a substantial investment and Comcast fronted the majority at five million. So thank you for coming in. I don't have any questions, but open up the rest of the council for questions. We're hearing none. Thank you very much for coming and presenting. I think that'll help everybody in now then better understand when they'll get some internet. But projected to completion date, we talked. Sorry, did you have a question, sir? Well, that's phase four. You didn't hear about that yet.
So this map is only representing with nexus. So this map is only representing what Comcast supplied for to attach our overhead lines. And so these might be areas that they might be going underground in. And so what they're looking at is attaching most of their lines to the main trunks of our of our poles and then probably going underground in other areas. So this is a map just representing what connects this is involvement is not the old Comcast. And you'll and you'll when the project starts, they're gonna be dipping down and over our pole. So they'll be attaching to some poles and then dipping underground to some areas when they start.
So maybe if you can just talk about the projected timeline for Kinesis. I know you're working on the the plans for the poles. Does that get turned back over to Comcast then at that point? And then the Comcast overall deadline, I believe, is November?
Do everything we can to march to that. We realize that that's their deadline. Our it's gonna come down to labor in the field and our contractors can scale up and get, you know, keep things moving. The it's gonna be between us and Comcast and keeping each other accountable to keep the process moving, right? All those steps. That I said there. So it's just the attention by us and keeping it moving forward. So.
Guys are doing a great job. Thank you. So just for for now, then talking to connects. Correction Comcast, G C C's, they're projecting right now November is the last word that they told me. So. Everybody should have high speed internet by November point five five. Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna move on to the fire department. And since Chief Miller is not here, I'm just gonna do a brief summary of it. So for the month of February, they had twenty nine calls, two fire alarms, which were both false alarms, seventeen medicals, nine calls for service. And one hazardous condition, which is CO, carbon monoxide. A big items that they worked on was the safety issues on the vehicles and it comes down to tires and brakes. Main reason to change these out with their weather crack and at end of life. So the chief also wanted to thank the maintenance department and the firefighters who assisted in facilitating facilitating the replacement of the tires and brakes to make it safe. And he is very humbled and honored by the employees and staff and their willingness to jump in and help. To get this job done. So overall, sounds like a very effective month and our fire trucks are now in a good condition. So on that note, let's move on to the sheriff department.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow, go ahead.
We we do after the sheriff's report, we do need to vote on the consent agenda. Yeah, we had voted to amend the entire agenda.
Got it.
But we still need to vote on the.
Nope, nope, you're up there. We'll do. So thank you, Councilmember Rainville. Shane screwed up again, guys. I'll just take that.
So so Mister Mayor, I moved that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
I guess we're gonna do it now. Would anybody like to say? All right. So we will do a roll call vote, starting with Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Councilmember Glazer.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm also an eye motion carries consent agenda complete. Sir, turn it over to you.
All right. Mister Mayor, members of the council, city staff and citizens, now then, the following is the sheriff's office report for the month of February twenty twenty five. Sheriff's deputies responded to one hundred and twenty eight calls for service. Of those calls, five were to bar none, six alarm calls, twenty one medicals, seven animal calls for service. Jumping into the bar none calls for service. On the thirteenth, deputy responded to the facility for a medical and a juvenile was transported to the hospital by ambulance. Also, on the thirteenth, a deputy took a phone call report of a juvenile assaulting a staff member. That juvenile was charged with fifth degree assault and remained at the facility. On the fourteenth, the sheriff's office responded to an assault report involving multiple juveniles. Happy Valentine's Day. During the investigation, a deputy was assaulted by a juvenile. Ultimately, three juveniles were arrested for assault and another was transported to the hospital for injuries. On the twenty second, a deputy responded for another assault report. During that, a juvenile was cited for fifth degree assault for hitting a staff member and remained at the facility. Calls for barn on are down from last month. And just another note on barn on, I'll be up there in early April. For a staff meeting to address kind of all of their staff with a member of our patrol division as well. Just to kind of get them all on the same page with expectations that we have of them, they have of us, just to make sure we're all on the same page. So.
Thank you, sir.
If the council has anything they'd like presented or address that meeting, feel free to let me know. Moving on to other calls for service, on the second, the sheriff's office responded to the one nine nine hundred block of Iguana Street for a possible burglary in progress. Two suspects were seen on camera at the business wearing masks and possibly attempting to break into the business. Deputies were able to locate the suspects pretty quickly and they admitted to dumpster diving. They were both issued trespass notices from that business. On the third, a deputy responded to a delayed assault report involving two juveniles. And I forgot to be address on there. My apologies. One juvenile was charged with assault and remained at the facility. I'm sorry, that was should have been in the bar none category. My mistake. On the eighteenth, a deputy stopped a vehicle for speeding. That driver was arrested for having a driver's license with the status of canceled IPS. On the miscellaneous notes, next month, we will now plan to do our meet the deputy nights for our two now then contract deputies will be out here. Get to know them a little bit better. As of now, the sheriff and the chief deputy are both available and plan to attend as well. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions from the council?
Not not in particular. I know that we've had I've had conversations personally, and I know that patrol has as well with their leadership. Kind of starting this expectation talk with their leadership. So. I can be hopeful that they're passing that along to staff and that's why we're going up there to meet in person just to make sure that all the staff is on the same page with us and with barn on's leadership. Hopefully it does.
Yeah, going on to that same note, it's definitely reduced, which is great. But setting that expectation, if they're gonna run a business, they need to be able to manage that business and it shouldn't include the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. Four, five, eight, ten times every month.
I agree.
So thanks for setting that expectation. Hey, sir, thank you very much. All right, we are gonna move into planning and zoning. So I'm gonna turn it over to Cindy.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. My monthly report leaving your packet. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I don't think they have any questions on the monthly report itself.
Moving on is the first regular item is the A and B addition. So moving on is, um, the first regular item is the A and B addition. This is actually three items rolled into one. So first off, they have a variance related to eliminating the need to construct the trail. Second, they have a conditional use permit to permit a flag lot. That's the lot at the very end of the cul-de-sac. And then third, they have their preliminary flat. For consideration, there are three separate resolutions in your packet. Um, I would request a change be made to the preliminary plat resolution. Um, number seventeen currently says that the subject property shall be final plotted in one phase. I would change, suggest changing that to the subject property may be final plotted in multiple phases.
That's number seven. Is that page one fifty-five? Is that what you're looking at?
I'm sorry, I don't have page numbers online.
Page one twenty-six. Uh, number seventeen.
So that would then, the first sentence is the only change of that pair of that paragraph, the subject property may be final plotted in multiple phases.
So does this need to be three separate votes on this?
It does need to be three separate votes. Um, and I did receive a very late word that, um, a representative from the applicant will be here about seven o'clock.
Wait, so should we just shelf this one and bring this up at the end and move to the next one right now?
Yep, if you're okay with that, Mr. Mayor.
I think it would make sense.
Sure, if they wanted to.
Or like to, uh, like to, if they, if they have any intent to discuss. Maybe we can just move on to the next one.
Yes, the next one is the Peterson Acres. Preliminary plat and final plat.
Which is page one fifty-five.
So this is one resolution for this one. Um, you had previously in twenty twenty-four approved your preliminary final plat for that. The developer decided to not pursue that original plan and has submitted this one instead. No roads would be constructed as part of this. So it's a relatively simple plan now. So it's sort of a rearrangement of some existing lot lines associated with two homes and then an outlaw for future development.
With that, just quick explanation, I don't know if you have the map up there, but that corner house is going to get a bigger piece of property out of this. And then you're making a buildable lot within there and then you're going to have a big outlaw. On page one sixty-four, it does give you a slight picture of that. Anything you could project up there, page one sixty-four, is that possible?
I thought I just did. I'll try again.
Try one more time, please. Picture really brings it into perspective. Anybody read what that says?
Little bit of a delay.
So if you could take your cursor and show us what they're trying to do with the.
Sure. So this, this is an existing house on the east side. That's part of the, the larger parcel that's already there. So this would be carved off as its own lot. Um, up here, the Kettler is on a very small lot with a home on it today. They would be purchasing part of the land and combining all of that together to be a larger lot for them. And then in the middle is the outlaw that is for future development.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainbow, go ahead.
I was just going to say. Excuse me. If there is no, uh, no additional questions, um, I would move the resolution approving a preliminary plat. And final plat for the development known as Peterson Acres.
Okay, so that was a, a, a motion. Would anybody like to second that?
Second.
Alright, so we'll move to, uh, roll call vote, starting with, uh, Councilmember Rainbow, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Councilmember Glazer.
Aye.
And I'm also an I motion carries. So complete with Peterson Acres. So you're going to go to ten D then?
Sure. So this is an interim use permit for original hockey mom's crowning. The planning commission recommended denial of the interim use permit. Largely for the reason that, at the time they were proposing to construct the accessory building for the site prior to there being a home on the site. So that was the proposal at that time. And it's my understanding that, um, the mayor has had some conversations with them. And that they might be interested in changing some of that. And, um, they are here tonight to talk about that potentially. If that is the case, then I would recommend that you table action on this tonight and send it back to the planning commission for reconsideration and potential conditions for an interim use permit.
So do we have Tony Howard? Tony, can you welcome state your name and address?
Tony Howard, nineteen forty-four, one hundred and thirty-fourth Avenue, Northwest in Andover. So, my, um, original hockey mom, my wife would be angry if you said moms. Little background, it's a family-owned business. We've been in, it's actually my, uh, wife's and son's business and they've been in business for this is our tenth year. We were just looking for a home, right? We have a house in Andover and, uh, you know, we're in our sixties, so, and she wants to continue doing what she's doing, but she can't stand the winters and our, and this is our home base, right? Uh, we have three booths at US Bank Stadium, we're at Huntington, Mariucci, do a lot of corporate events. My intent is to have my wife be able to continue her business and just walk down to her shop. And as far as changing our approach, uh, yes, that's our intent now is to build the house and then come back and, and, uh, build the, the shop and the garage. So the, uh, couple of stipulations I'd like to see is is that I, I was able to maybe do footings to grade for the shop at the same time I do the house. Because it's just a matter of scale, right? It's, uh, it's probably about seven acres. I have to, uh, do a lot of movement of dirt to make it uh, with where the engineering works. Uh, little background about the property used to be a borrow pit. Uh, so I have some, uh, issues I've got accomplished. Law, I had all the engineering done, the map's not up there, but I've done all the engineering. Um, really took a focus on, um, on how to make the best project possible for the family. This is a long-term thinking for us. You know, after my wife and I decide to go, you know, uh, to Florida, it's going to, my son is going to just really take it over and keep going. So it's going to be something that is going to be in the community long-term. It's not here today and five years gone. Uh, I looked at the community as a whole. It's a great growing community for us. Uh, it also afforded us the ability to have, um, a really a family legacy is what we're really looking to build for our son and our daughter. So it's going to be a longstanding, uh, property. And, uh, in essence, we, and we really are, you know, putting our money where our mouth is. It's really going to be a top-notch house and facility. It's going to look like, it'll have the rural feel without being a pole barn.
Tony, can you get to the conditions that you specifically wanted to state?
One was, I, I already stated it, but is to do the foundation of the barn and the shop before before I complete the house. Just, uh, just, uh, the scale of it, um, because doing all the grading and the, the classified driveways and all that, it's just to have, makes more sense to have that on in hand. And to be ready, to be honest with you, to start building the, the commercial kitchen, um, as soon as the house is done. But I don't want to shortchange the house because this is something my wife has wanted to design and build their own house. Last two, I did it myself and she was angry. So, we've been married for forty.
We, we don't want that.
No, we don't want anger. So that's kind of what I was looking for, right, is to, to see if I can do the foundations of both. Just for the scale of it. And because there is about ten thousand yards of fill I have to move. So it's not a cheap expense. Another one would be, um, consideration by the council that I was able to now I lost my train of thought.
That's good.
Is to have some sort of instrument where I could have approval for the kitchen. Even though I'm not building it right away, but have you guys approve it, right? I don't want to go spend what I'm going to spend on the house and all this engineering. And all the expense of doing this and then six months, eight months later, I can't do it. Right? That would be like, ooh, I'm bad. Um, because this is not, it's, it's expensive. Okay? So I'd like to have some sort of approval by the council saying, okay, this is great. Move forward. I'm good with it. Down the road. Whatever that, that, uh, area of timeline is, you say it's okay that I'm going to be able to have this commercial kitchen there. Right? I mean, if, if I get down, build a house and now I had, I do the foundation for the barn and now, oops, I can't do the commercial kitchen. I just made a seven-figure estate. Let's put it that way.
So I think Cindy, you had a recommendation on how to best proceed. So this was denied from the planning and zoning committee, comes to council. But what, you had a recommendation, you, you share that?
Thank you. So planning commission is just a recommending body, of course, so they recommended denial to the council. Um, and they didn't consider conditions of what an interim, um, use permit for a home occupation would look like on this site. So my recommendation is that you table it this evening. Um, and send it back to the planning commission for their review again, and then they can look at those conditions. Um, and come up with conditions that might be precedent to, um, the opening of the bakery itself that would, you know, potentially open.
So we can get it on the agenda for the P and Z meeting and then follow up, um, with their first meeting in April.
Yes.
Back here and with a different recommendation when, well, potentially, I can't make that P and Z.
Right, we'll have to see what they do, but.
Yeah, but the piece we're missing is the terms and conditions is what you're stating.
Well, and see if, if we take that, um, factor of building the accessory, accessory building out of first out of the way to where it's building house first, you know, what their considerations would be, which I think is a pretty significant game changer.
It is.
Related to their.
I mean, I, I think I, I think we meet all the conditions, you know, uh, that Cindy placed forward, uh, to the planning and zoning, that the only condition I really didn't meet is to have the house before.
Correct.
The other structure. So.
But we need the conditions from the P and Z, so we got to go backwards.
I know, I get it.
You're just going to keep coming visiting us every twice a month right now, so.
I don't know where all my friends are, but, yeah.
Councilmember Brian, go ahead. Mayor, I'm, I'd make a motion to table this issue and send it back to P and Z for review of any additional, um, conditions that can be, um, put uh, and be, then be reviewed for this project.
Perfect. Do we have a second?
A second.
So Councilmember Glazer's second, we'll do roll call vote. We'll start with Councilmember Glazer.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, before we vote, I, I just have a question. Is there a possibility within these conditions, if, if Mr. Howard feels it would be appropriate, that there would be a plan where they're building the house and some of the bakery at the same time?
I'll attempt to answer that, um, Councilmember Rainbow. So I think that's something we'll have to sort through and also talk with the building official. So I, I really am not able to talk about that this evening because I don't have answers.
Alright, thank you very much.
I, I would concede that I would love to just do the foundation, right? That's a big piece that would, there's the hockey mom. So, um, yeah, if I can just, in, in that process, just to get the foundation of the bakery and the garage. Um, so that would, that would be a big piece for me, a big help for sure. Cause now I don't have to double up on contracting time. So I appreciate it.
But that's something we're going, that's something we're going to have to talk to this, the city building official about. We have, it's all timing. Can this be done within state laws and we hear your request? We've got it written down.
Sure.
We just got to explore it. This is the, you know, first I'm hearing about it. I am not that familiar with your project, you know, and I get it. We just need to look at it. I can give you the twenty-eight pages right here when you're done. Maybe for later tonight, you know?
It's not something that hasn't happened before because you used to be a cement contractor. Where like you get footing degrade permit, right? While you do another project, it's not, it's not something that's not out of the ordinary. So.
Councilmember Rainbow, did that answer your question or your statement?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Alright, we would, uh, so we've already got part of the vote done. I would turn it over to you for your vote.
I'm I.
Alright, I'm also an I motion carries, this is table, going back to P and C. Alright, so we'd like to, uh, thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'd like to go back to, uh, ten B, which is A and B addition.
Hi, I'm Jordan Brown.
Hold on one second. Thank you. I was almost there. Alright, Cindy, would you like to?
Yes, so, um, as I kind of started before, this this one involves three different pieces to it. There's a variance to not require them to construct trails along the salt or along proposed two hundred and ninth avenue northwest. A conditional use permit for a flag lot and the flag lot is lot number four on the north. And the preliminary plat for the whole thing. Final plat and development agreement is a separate step that'll come to you possibly as soon as April. Is the intention. Um, these will need to be taken as three separate actions and motions. And with that, I'll leave it to Mr. Brown if he has any other comments.
Um, no, I don't have any comments to add, um, but I can answer any questions you might have.
So open up to the city council for any questions, uh, for um, A and B, would we call it A and B addition? For myself, I don't have any questions. Um, I was at the, the planning and zoning, I've heard this multiple times, so I'm very comfortable. But it'll be three separate votes, one for the variance, conditional use, and then preliminary plot. Any questions, Cindy?
No, I make questions. I've read the material.
Councilmember Rainbow, any questions at all?
No, I have no questions.
I have no question.
Right, Cindy, um, one of the things that you, you said right before the meeting, you got a text. Has that been resolved other than that one change?
Yes, it has. Um, but I am asking, as we previously discussed, that you amend number seventeen in the preliminary plat. And preliminary plat findings to be that the subject property may be final plotted in multiple phases, just to provide some flexibility.
And that was on page one twenty-six. Alright, so with no questions, we can. Would somebody like to make the motion on the very first one, which is the variance, uh? Make sure I got the right one, variance within a plat known as A and B addition.
Mister Mayor.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Make a resolution approving the variance within the plat known as the A and B addition based on the uh, recital set forth and incorporated as well as the findings of fact.
Complete, is there a second?
I'll second.
Mister Glazer's second, we'll move to roll call vote, councilmember Rainville, you're up first.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Councilmember Glazer.
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, motion carries. First one's complete. The next one's for the flag lot.
Mister Mayor.
It's our motion for the flag lot.
Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville, go ahead.
I would move resolution approving a conditional use permit for a flag lot within a plat known as A and B addition.
A and B addition.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by councilmember Glazer, uh, we will do roll call vote, starting with councilmember Glazer.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Aye.
And I am also an aye, motion carries. Next one.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Brian, go ahead.
Make a motion approving the preliminary plat to the development known as A and B addition, uh, using the amended. Uh, findings of that.
Page one twenty-two, is that where you're looking right now?
Yep. Perfect.
Councilmember uh, Rainville has seconded it. Alright, so roll call vote. Starting with councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
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 And I'm also an aye, motion carries.
Mister Mayor. Yes, sir. Did we? I don't, and maybe Cindy can correct, did we get the developer's agreement for Peterson Acres? I don't recall voting on that one.
You're correct, we did not vote on that one, sorry. That was a separate motion and. I failed to um, introduce it to you, I think.
Page one seventy-five.
One seventy-five, so we had another one snuck in there? Uh, there is two. Okay, so we are gonna. Gordon, we're good, thank you.
Thank you all.
It's, it's approved, uh, so looking at ten C, number two, we missed the developers' agreement.
Mister Mayor. Councilmember Brian, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution for the developers' agreement for the development known as Peterson Acres.
Perfect, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Glazer's second, we will go to roll call vote. Make a request, just to amend your motion contingent on attorney review. Yeah, because there may be last minute changes, minor grammar, minor. Things that are not substantive in nature, they just normally happen sometimes.
I will accept that amendment.
Amended and second syllable.
Yes, second.
Seconds to the ballot, we'll go to roll call vote, starting with councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Glazer.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, motion carries. Hey, I think we are done with all planning and zoning, is there more on the back page? No, planning and zoning is complete. We'll move to the administrator update. Uh, Mister Johnson, will you please provide the update?
Yeah, so you have the administrator update in front of you, I'm just gonna add a couple more things and then I'll stand for questions. Um, a soft launch of the new website is expected to be in about three weeks as an addition, I just found out today, um, Lexi's been working very hard on that. There is an annual training tomorrow morning for all employees in Ham Lake that has to do with the. You know, blood and body fluids and stuff that we all have to go to.
Bloodborne pathogens training.
That one. So, um, we will close the office until eleven o'clock. Um, well, eleven fifteen or so by the time we get back. So that all of us can go and attend, um, as well as public works. Um, Joe also did get estimates for dust control. Um, I just, we'll bring this to the next meeting on the twenty-seventh. I just want you to be aware that the estimates are forty thousand dollars and we would have to reduce to eight miles rather than ten or eleven like we've done in the past as costs have increased. Um, we had about forty-six thousand dollars budgeted. And he doesn't want to go to forty-five because. He was concerned about getting that close to how much we had in our budget. It's estimated just to be a little over a five thousand dollars a mile. For the calcium chloride. So just kind of think about that. Um, and then I have one other question, which is something I haven't addressed at all since I've been here, is. And maybe councilmember Rainville or Brian can help me out the most, but do we allow garage sales at the historic town hall with a resident who is a senior and if we do, would we charge a fee? This is something completely new, I haven't, and I have a resident that's asking to do a garage sale here.
I don't think we've heard talked about having garage sales, anybody can. Use the facility, but.
She was just asking if we would. Ask for a fee if she was doing it to sell things. And I did not have an answer.
Well, where would it be on? Would they base it, they would base it on the historic town?
Is, is it, is it a one-family garage sale or is it a multi-family garage sale?
You know, I don't have that detail, I just know that she had called and asked if she could do it, I didn't catch if it was a lot of people or just her.
The farmer's market has sales here all the time.
They do, and then we also have a craft sale, so I just wanted to make sure because it was very specific about a garage sale, she's a resident and therefore she would get it for free. Or resident with a senior.
Isn't the uh, Heritage Festival run by a nonprofit? Would they have any input in this? I don't know, I'm asking guys. You said during the Heritage Festival, is that what you said? No?
No, just on a weekend.
I totally missed that, okay. Never mind.
Yeah.
disregard my comment.
So Mister Mayor.
So did you get enough input? Councilmember Rainville, go ahead.
Yeah. The only thing I think we should talk about. And it would be for a late, later day. Is that if people are going to use it. As a fundraiser, we should, and they're not a nonprofit community organization. Or the farmer's market, which is a city function. Should we? Should we, should we request a payment for the use of the property? That, that discussion then would have to. Sorry. You're saying that, that, whatever discussion that is, that if we, if we make a change, that would be reflected in our fee schedule.
So just a clarifying question, because the person is a senior living in now, then that's what makes the facility free for them?
Correct.
I, I think maybe a little bit more details in regards to the extent. Of the sale. Is it, is it just her own property that she's selling? Is like, is it, is it multi-families that are participating?
I think we can bring this one via the email and probably discuss it that way instead of. Doing it right now, they may want an answer today, but I think a little bit of thought going into it also because there's wear and tear in the building, if you bring people in. I don't know, I could see it a couple of different ways, but I wouldn't mind just thinking about it for a day.
Okay, but we will have to vote on it because of the fee and reset some for if we're going to or put some detail in it, is that correct?
Yes, if you're gonna. Charge a fee, you're gonna want to. Make that as a motion by the city council, the other concern I would have doing anything by email and I, is open meeting law potential violation, so. If you are, one of the concerns, I guess, I hear, I don't know historically, have you ever had a rental agreement? For anyone that is using the historic town hall?
People.
You do, and then as part of that rental agreement, is there a fee and it sounds like you have a historically had a policy. Where you do have some sort of a fee, but it may be waived in certain situations.
That is correct.
So that would probably already be part of your. Your, your fee schedule.
Right, and someone, they do have to also um, give a damage deposit.
Yeah. For any damages, which is normal. So it needs to be done.
Um, so, get more detail and I'll just bring it back on the twenty-seven. Is that acceptable?
I, I think that's perfect.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to do, highlight a couple of things on there is that I will be out at the MCFOA next week, Tuesday to Friday. And the following week is audit week. Um, I am gonna take some personal time on Friday, um, for a while, so just know that I probably won't be back in the office till about three o'clock. And with that, I'd like to pass it over to Frank, who has been working diligently on name brand storage on the rental home.
And he has not come to a conclusion, he, city attorney and myself are working on this. Um, we have got a record from the sheriff's office of thirty different incidents. Associated with the self-storage. They are in twenty twenty-two, nine, there were twelve in twenty twenty-three, seven in twenty twenty-four, and the good news is in twenty twenty-five, we only have two incidents. But it's something we'd like to look at, uh, I'm guessing that your contract, I don't know this for sure, but your contract for sure has something to do with numbers. And I would guess that this would influence the kinds of expenses that now then taxpayers. Are expected to pay, so we want to work on that, we'll see what we come up with. That is all.
Sure, working with, uh, it was brought to my attention this afternoon before I came here, Frank and I had some discussions about it. There's some additional things that I need to review in terms of various permits that have been granted. To see if they're in violation of any of those conditions, also we need to speak with Andy Schrader, the building official. Because there may be some building code violations that we might be able to utilize to address these concerns.
And Mister Mayor. The other thing was the garbage and the cars, so there would be some ordinances that.
That would be a nuisance, potential nuisance violation.
Clean up, right?
Yes. So did they, did they already, we already sent one letter to them at this point? Or we, this has just been brought to our attention this afternoon. Alright, I, I know Mister Boyle's was working on it, so. Back to you, uh. Uh, Miss Johnson, do you have anything else?
Uh, not unless you have any questions for me.
Anybody from the council have any questions for Miss Johnson? Hey, moving on, we got uh, some new business. Sues. Oh, this is the culvert project. Alright, so. We already visited this, what, last month, and we already approved as a council member one culvert. Now they went back and analyzed it and they said a second culvert and additional funding is necessary?
It is. They actually, when they went down there and kind of started digging around, you actually see that there's two culverts, they're not just one. Um, and the price for it, of course, is higher than anticipated. So what I need to know is, do we still want to try to move forward? Um, the culverts are gonna be twenty-nine thousand dollars approximately. Um, there, we have a couple of options, number one, we could. Get the culverts, have them here, finish and plan on finish doing the road again next spring with the new budget. Or we could dip into the road fund and finish it and get it done. Um, and still just do the hundred and eighty-fifth with the asphalt, so that we can get that. Um, back up to par, and then we'll do this one next year with the asphalt thing. So it has a year to settle.
So option is to do the culverts and not do any asphalt, or do the asphalt, the culvert and asphalt?
Well, yes, yeah, that's really, that's like he's, you know, he says, I can't guarantee when it's gonna fail, it could. Last another two years and it could fail this summer, just know, i- if it does fail this summer, then obviously we have to do something about it. It only, it doesn't affect a whole lot of residents, but it will need to be done quickly if it does fail. It's held for so long, he's, you know, would. It's up to council how we want to do it, if we want to spend the money this year or next year. Um, he would like to get the culverts, however, though, and at least have those here because it is twenty-two thousand, you know, or twenty-eight, nine, twenty, what, twenty-eight, eight, ninety-nine?
Okay, so we had already approved one last month, um, so if we were to do asphalt, what additional cost? Because right now we're at fifty thousand dollars without asphalt. We don't know the cost of the asphalt.
Well, no, we do know, we all, we had the um, process of the asphalt, that was. On page two forty-one. So a hundred and eighty-fifth is nine thousand seven twenty-six and two hundred and eighteenth is twenty-two, one eighty, and forgive me, I misspoke. He still wants to do two hundred and eighteenth because that one has a patch that needs to be completed. To make the road more smooth again, and we'll do a hundred and eighty-fifth, the almost ten thousand dollar one. Next year, if we complete those culverts this year. If we complete the culverts next year, then he wants to wait till twenty twenty-six to do the patching. Or the asphalt patch.
Weaving it off, and then the other thing is, so if we look at our road budget, we had three hundred and. Three hundred and sixty thousand in our road budget. As what we propose is, the residents are paying for some of that over time, so it doesn't come back immediately. We had three hundred and eighty thousand budgeted, out of the three sixty is what the estimated, so we have about twenty thousand right there. Um, so to me, doing culverts is really important, really, I think comes down to the question is, is do we do the twenty-two, two thousand dollars in asphalt time?
I don't think he wants to do the twenty-two this year, he wants to do that next year, it's the extra cost of the culvert.
Well, I, if I recall from the last meeting, the, the reason for delaying the, the. Uh, replacing the asphalt is giving time for the, for the road base to settle back down so that we're not going back and, and fixing it the following year. Are, are we open for discussion on this?
Absolutely.
So my, one question that I have when I reviewed this is due to the change of the scope of work and the change of uh. Cost of the estimate to complete the work, is this something that should go back out for bid, public bid, I guess?
The culverts, no, um. Because I believe that was, they were the lowest on all the culverts to begin with. Um, and the work is not gonna change, uh, Perkins is not gonna change their bid.
Just the, just the cost of material to.
Just the cost of the, the materials which was gonna become out of, um, the city funds anyway, because the guys will deliver it all there. Um, however, they had extra culvert, which we are also supposed to supply, so Perkins would then do it for the same amount of money.
Good.
Um, and tear it up, so that number, so it's just the culvert, that's the, the extra cost.
Yeah, just the culvert. Because I know we did have two bids on this.
We did.
On the excavator. When you say, I'm sorry, I, I hear these things, when you say two bids, how much is the estimated project cost?
Um, about fifty thousand.
Okay, so you, when you say bids, are you using that generically for quotes?
Yes. Oh, sorry, not sealed bids or anything.
Okay, no, I just, you know, my, the hairs in the back of my neck, you know, rise, I just want to make sure we do every, un- under Minnesota law. With sealed bids, you have to go with the lowest responsible bidder. With quotes, you have to get two quotes, you have to keep them in the file for a number of years, and you're not. Work, I don't understand why, but you're not obligated to go with the lowest quote. So you have a lot more discretion, but I just wanted to make sure that.
We'll use the term quote, so we got two quotes, they went with the lowest, so the quotes are complete.
Yes, thank you for, I didn't know the term bid and quote were two separate things here. It is in my world, you know, that's the, that's the problem, I. Any other discussion on this? Councilmember Brian or Councilmember Rainville, any other additional discussion? I just gotta read this, uh, the way this is written right now, so the resolution for this particular one. Is written for the. Fifty thousand plus an additional twenty-three.
Mister Mayor, the resolution that is in there is the one that we'd already approved, so I was just looking more for a motion to go ahead and purchase that second culvert and get it going.
So you have the res- resolution that's already approved on page two forty, but on two thirty-eight, you've got an RCA.
Right.
So I think we just got to be clear on how we motion this, if we're looking for just the culverts in the work, it's basically the fifty thousand. And everything else written in here would be, um, allocated for twenty twenty-six. Would anybody like to go forward with a motion on this?
Yeah. Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
So the patchwork, the, the culvert on two hundred and eighteenth is done. Is that correct?
That one is completed and it needs the asphalt.
Right, so we put the glass hive on, we let it sit over the winter, it needs the asphalt patch.
Correct.
But the culvert on a hundred and eighty-fifth. Needs to replace, but there's two more culverts. Which. Would be. Would be. What was allotted the fifty thousand plus an additional twenty-three thousand, and then the question would be, do we do the work? To go ahead and fix the culverts that could fail at any time. And or, and then if the work is done, it's gonna sit over winter to to settle, and then the plan would be whether the work is done this year or next. Then the work would be set, allowed to settle over the winter and then planned to be paved the following summer. Is that correct?
That is correct, so it will sit, settle, and then hopefully the patch will last a lot longer.
So two culverts, one on one eighty-fifth and one on two eighteen.
No, two culverts at the same place. We're only talking about.
Got it, we're only talking about one.
Needed two culverts instead of one.
That was not clear when I read this, as you can see. Thanks for bringing that up, Councilmember Brian.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would move that we approve the replacement of the two culverts on a hundred and eighty-fifth Avenue Northwest. Calendar year twenty twenty-five. And the patching of the asphalt in twenty twenty-six.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Alright, the roundtable correction, roll call vote.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
So as was stated in the RCA, the money is not in the budget, are we going to transfer the funds over from our. Um from the capital plan into the road and bridge fund, or are we going to, how how are we gonna approach that?
We did not talk about how we were budgeting it. Um nor was that part of the motion, so do we want to talk about the budget side of it?
Right, it will come out of the road and bridge fund that we have, that I spoke with Lori about it and we'll be able to make that work. She said we have money in there, so.
So that's different than what's in the RCA, is that correct?
It is, because the RCA, whoops.
Right, it's not, I'm just looking at the statement about it not being in the budget.
Right, it's not current, well, yeah, it's it's out of the capital rodent.
Right, so it's not in the current.
It's not in twenty twenty-five road and bridge fund, it is in the capital in twenty twenty-six or.
Basically your projected.
Right.
Capital.
This would be one of those amendments that would be done at the end of the year where we would move a little bit more money over if we needed to.
We'd have to, if there, if we need the extra, we'd have to transfer money from the capital into road and bridge to pay for this.
Correct.
Or get it from, however we get it, uh balance it at the end of the year.
Yes, or take it from somewhere else if it wasn't just needed. Um but again, the other choice is just purchase the culvert this year and then do the patching and fixing next year. So it's totally up to council.
If we have culverts that are potentially ready to fail, I I don't recommend waiting till they fail to to change them, I just don't think that's a good plan. So it would should be for culverts, just like the motion, we've already got a second on it, um but I want to make sure. Are we good now?
Yeah.
Alright, so we'll start with you for roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm also an aye, motion carries. Alright, so we're getting culverts and the work should be done, Mister Mayor, councilmember Brian, welcome to adhere. Do we need a second on that?
Second.
Alright, so we will adjourn the meeting uh. So we have a third, thank you.